Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Paulding County Planning Commission. What is this, February already, meeting? So, at this time, I would ask anybody that has an audible device, phone, or if you go back and have beepers, please turn them off or to silence so they don't interrupt the proceedings. We're going to dispense with the reading of how to participate in a public meeting at this time. If you would like to read more into it, there's a copy placed on the back table there for your convenience, or you please take it for light reading overnight. I will cover some of the basics, though, for you as we go through the introductory proceedings. At this time, I will entertain a motion from the Planning Commission. I'll ask them, have you had the opportunity to read the minutes? Do you have any concerns, requested edits? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on the minutes from the previous meeting of this body.
No motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve from Ms. Seaver. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. I would advise, if you have a case before the Planning Commission, an application before the Planning Commission, we are a recommending body. We will give 15 minutes in total time to the applicant. They may utilize all of that time or reserve some for rebuttal. Additionally, anybody wishing to speak on behalf will use a portion of that time as well. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition will be allotted a total of 15 minutes. If you have multiple people waiting behind you to be able to speak, and it may be in opposition or just may have simple questions, comments, or concerns, it comes out of that 15 minutes, so please be respectful of those waiting in line behind you. All questions, all comments, for anybody that stands at the lectern, anybody wanting to speak will need to come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair, and the chair is me. Any questions from the Planning Commission or from the Board of Commissioners will not count against either of the allotted times. And Mr. Robinson, yes? And Mr. Robinson, if you would, I know we have a little bit of housekeeping on the agenda itself, if you would announce the change.
Absolutely, and good afternoon, everyone. There are several items that have been forwarded again. This is application 2021-32Z and the application 2022-01-SUP. Those are forwarded to the March 22 meeting, as well as land use permit 2201-LUP. That one's forwarded to March. Resoning application 2022-01Z, Richard Butler's been forwarded to March. And then also 2022-03Z, application by Adam Baker, Boyd Austin. That one is also forwarded to March 22 meeting. So that will leave us with two applications here on 2/22/22 at 2:00.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, I was asked at the last meeting to please remind Planning Commission, if you wish to speak on the matter, please turn your mic on. Reach over and turn the little green button on. At this time, Mr. Robinson, if you'd introduce the first application.
Okay, thank you. First application, 2022-02Z, application by Jenny Stanfield, requesting to rezone 7.66 acres from R2 suburban residential district to A1 agricultural district, is to facilitate a small market garden. Properties located in Land Lot 1115, District 3, Section 3, north side of Dewest Road, west of Ivy Lane and west of Hiram McWhorter Highway, which is also State Route 92. Address is 352 Beecham Path, send commission post one. Staff recommended approval with one stipulation, and we have had numerous calls, letters, in-person visits in opposition. And I think you have those, copies of those letters in your backup material. The applicant is present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. I can't hear her.
Thanks. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Jenny Stanfield. These are my sons, Levi and Tucker. We would like to rezone 352 Beecham Path to be rezoned from R2 to A1 in order to operate a small family market garden. I will not have pigs or raise dogs. Having a market garden has been a dream of mine for over 10 years. This is my dream in planning book that's been with me those years. I was a Hiram Hornet in elementary school and have lived in many other states since. I'm excited to be back in Paulding County to be a part of this community and provide local and naturally grown produce for friends and neighbors.
The, I'll go ahead and start. There's one, there's one stipulation that's been added by staff, which requires the applicant, applicant to agree to no canine business, but you're saying you would not operate with canine nor swine?
Correct.
And you would be agreeable to that being a stipulation?
Yes.
The swine addition?
Yes.
And are you aware of the opposition, any of the concerns that have been voiced to you directly?
None have been voiced to me directly.
Okay. Some of the things that are covered is the length and width of the driveway, being very narrow, simply that of driveway, or how is that going to impact the additional traffic? What kind of vehicles are you looking at, be utilizing, utilizing the road, the driveway, I guess, to get back to the area that you're looking to utilize for the garden?
Right, and I'm, I'm planting a no-dig garden, so I'm not going to have big tractors coming in and out. It's, I feel like it's a more ecologically sound way to garden. So it's basically mulch and then a layer of organic soil in rows that, and that's how I'm planting my garden.
Have you had conversations with any of your neighbors regarding your intention with the rezoning? I'm just curious.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Not regarding the rezoning. And I think you all have pictures of my garden from the past year, correct?
I have seen it.
That's a, that's an idea of what it's going to be.
And you say not the rezoning. Have you talked with any, with, regarding your intended use of the property?
Um, I don't, I don't think in detail.
Okay.
I think I've talked, well, I gave them vegetables from last year's garden.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Do you have a legal easement to your property? One of the things that was brought up with some of the opposition was that you don't have a legal easement to do other people maintain the driveway.
I, I provided the information that I thought was needed. I know there's a section that is owned by three of the neighbors. It's a little triangle in the middle, but the driveway is, my understanding is, the driveway is shared by myself and the Harveys, past the point of, of the mailboxes. And I have not been approached that I needed to do anything to the driveway. I have offered, I'm ready to help with the driveway when needed, so I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay, what about parking? What, how many, are you going to have coming in? Do you have any ideas as far as, are you going to be selling the, the produce you're talking about, or?
I am, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like a parking lot. It would be, people would come at different times. It wouldn't be more than maybe five cars at a time. It wouldn't be a market there. I would take to a farmer's market, or there might be a pickup here and there, but I'm also thinking about working at that, that part where it makes the J at the bottom of the property. I'm thinking about even putting, if people need to pick up their vegetables down there, because I don't want that much traffic on the whole driveway either. So if there's a, you know, I'm, I'm thinking through other options. If people come and pick up the vegetables on the property, then there could be options of not having to go the whole driveway.
Do you plan on doing, like, do you pick them? Like, people would come in there and, like, you have, you know, sometimes you have, you pick them with strawberries?
Right.
Or with tomatoes, or different types of vegetables?
That hasn't been my plan. I, I don't know that I'll have a strawberry patch that's that big, or, I, I would like to be able to show people the garden and for them to be able to come and look at it, but that's not my biggest goal, is to have, I would, it's just, it makes more sense, business-wise, for me to pick and them to pick up.
Are you planning on maybe selling it to local restaurants for them to be able to do, like, farm-to-table? Is that your thought?
That is one of the thoughts, yes.
Okay.
I'm actually going to do a, a business plan with the Extension Office, coming up to kind of explore those different ideas, to see how I can enter into the community more, to be able to provide these, this food.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Do you do all of the planting?
Yes, ma'am.
Board of Commissioners? Oh, you did. Mr. Anderson?
What size area do you intend to cultivate and have a garden on?
Right now, I have a 50 by 50. I'm not using, I'm only using three rows at this point, but I have it covered in plastic to kill all the weeds, so that I can slowly expand. I, I can't do a 50 by 50 this year or next year, but I'm hoping to add a row or two every other year, every year to expand that way.
So how long have you lived on the property?
Two years.
Have you already been having a gardening, a garden there?
Yes, sir, and I, I think I submitted pictures of our garden last year.
Okay.
Would you be agreeable to no sales on the property?
I think I would be agreeable to a compromise, maybe a certain amount of sales. I guess I haven't thought through that, so I don't know that I want to immediately say, yes, I'd be agreeable to it. I'm willing to open conversation about it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners?
So Jenny, you got Tucker and who else?
Levi.
Levi?
Yes, sir.
You read about child labor laws?
Well, shh.
Do they know how hard a work a garden is?
Do they know how? You can ask them. I think they do.
No, I think it's very commendable, very, very good project.
Thank you.
But it is hard work.
Yes, definitely.
Mr. Stone?
I have a few questions, only because I'm in the same situation. I live down a path, I have a farm. I don't have the farm. Some people in the past have had a farm, just like what you're talking about, so a few questions, just because of the issues that I've known that my neighbors have had during that, and it was upkeep of the road. And then one thing I'm thinking of, is this a gravel drive?
Yes.
So is there an apron on Dewest Road that's paved so far back? And then it's okay. So, I mean, that would only be a safety concern of people coming and leaving in your drive. I was just wondering that. But, but the only thing I could say is, you know, I didn't, I didn't have a problem with them doing what they were doing. I mean, they, they grew it, most of it went off-site, there was people coming in. But of course, it usually goes down to the whole maintenance of the driveway, and of course, a gravel driveway is a little bit more to upkeep than an asphalt driveway, so I would, if it passes, I would at least suggest getting with your neighbors to make sure y'all have a, a good plan moving forward, because, you know, not only for yourself, but the, your neighbors, but your customers also coming in and out.
And, and that could even be a part of my business plan, is to keep the driveway maintained, and then that would relieve my neighbors of even having to worry about it. So I'm open to conversation about that, too.
Well, some of the, were there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? I didn't want to cut you off. Some of the concerns that, you know, I've taken a look at the opposition letters, just skimming them, to see what some of the concerns were, and some of it was about strangers visiting the property that people do not know. You're talking about changing the use that is embedded in a residential community area to something else that would attract customers and traffic that they're unfamiliar with. Safety is a part of that concern. As it relates to any animals that you might have on the property, how would you address fecal runoff from, you know, the animals dwelling there? Would you put the protections in place that are required? And then maybe this question would be more to staff regarding a business of this type. Would there be any review from the county to ensure that those protections are in place environmentally, because you don't want that running off into the creeks or the streams? And I do look on the map, and there are a couple of what appears to be streams, by either intermittent or seasonal streams, or maybe they're constant flow, that you have to protect. There is a 25-foot buffer required by the state that you cannot touch.
Right.
In addition to that, the county has taken precaution to add an additional 50-foot buffer from the top of the string bank, so that's 75 feet of undisturbed area that should remain in place unless you have gone through a process of variance for that through the county. So I guess if I can take that one question and go to Chris or whoever you would like to see, is there something there for review that would be in place for?
Well, I just wanted to, to bring a couple of things up also in, in with that. She currently, under her current zoning, if she grows tomatoes and lettuce and things like that, as anybody in R2 district, it is permitted to sell agricultural products raised on the premises under the current zoning ordinance in the R2 district. It also allows it in the A1 district, just to want everybody to know, understand that. As far as agricultural uses and, and streams and that such, state law is really lenient on agricultural uses if it comes to creeks and, and to runoff and such. And so, no, there would not be a county review unless there was complaints of really...
So it would be responding to complaints of runoff that's contaminating the raw?
That's correct.
But it'd still be an avenue to have it addressed?
Yes.
And if I may also say, I don't know that, I think that where I have my garden and where I would have any animals is much more than 75 feet from any water.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
I have one other question. On the map here, it's showing that your, if this is your driveway, if this is accurate, it shows leaving your property and then coming back into your property. Do you have some type of written permissions, so say, to, to use this other property, this adjoining property?
I don't. Ms. Harvey and I have verbally agreed to keep the driveway open, but she can speak to that when, when she speaks it.
What kind of, you mentioned other animals. What other animals are you going to have on this parcel?
Yes, sir, I've been thinking of sheep and goats mainly. I might have a cow or two way down the line, just, but it would not be a herd by any means, or, because I, my main focus is a garden, so...
And you mentioned it's going to be organic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When you say organic, does that mean you'll have chicken litter brought in, or manure or something like that, to mix in with the soil to improve it?
Um, I don't know that I'll have it brought in. I have organic compost that I'm using. It might have that in it, because you can go to Home Depot and buy a bag of that, but...
But you wouldn't just be bringing in a load of that?
No.
Okay.
No.
Port of information on that chicken layer, you can't use it for gardens anymore, because it actually kills, it kills vegetation now. I have another question. What about your business hours?
Um, my original thought is to have just one day a week, if I make it where people order online and throughout the week, and then I have one day of pickup, and so it would be reasonable, like nine to two or something, or two parts of the day where it's not all day long, because I also have other things to do. I don't need to be available all day, but I would like people to be able to come and get their produce if they, that fits with their hours also.
Would you be willing to place a stipulation for your business hours, parameter of business hours, because that's what some of your opposition, they're complaining about people coming through there at night?
Sure, sure.
And so I think it would be feasible to state a parameter of hours?
Yes.
That's permitted, to make it, and make it a stipulation.
I can, I can work with that.
Yeah, we have a, we actually have a organic farm about a mile from us, and they carry most everything they have to the farmer's markets. They do have an online, where it can be ordered online, and one or two days a week?
Right.
For like two or three hours, they allow people to come pick it up at the farm. I think that's a pretty typical thing nowadays with organic farm.
Yes, and that's what I was thinking.
What, so what hours would you be willing to state?
Um, I would think in the afternoon, six would be the latest. I think maybe nine to, nine to 12 and three to six, just off the top of my head, because I would want people to be able to get home from work and come pick it up if needed.
They work between nine and, nine AM and six PM. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
May I ask the purpose, if you're, if you're at, where you're currently zoned at R2?
Mm-hmm.
You're able to sell the vegetables and grow it and everything. The purpose to, to changing to agriculture would be to add the animals?
Yes.
Okay, and are those animals going to be for pleasure, or that you're going to use, like, the goat's milk, or?
Right. I would like to also sell the goat's milk and/or use it to make soaps or products using goat's milk.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission? Ms. Anfield, you have several minutes remaining, so you may take your seat.
Okay.
I'll continue, and then probably we'll call you back up shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Okay, what do I do?
Sign in, state your name, and address your comments to me.
Oh, here. I live on Dewest Road. I don't necessarily live on, you know, have that much contact with people on Beecham Path, but my, my car was totaled this past summer on Dewest Road. It's a thruway for a lot of people going to Acworth, Marietta, Town Center. We've got a new housing development that we're really not sure exactly how it's going to impact the traffic yet completely, just right around the corner. This property is located on a slight hill and curve, and there is no turn lanes or anything there, which wouldn't effectively need to be done. Other than that, I mean, that would be my main concern. It's just the traffic on the road and the way that this little, it is nothing but a driveway, and it's not very well gravelled. It has been there a long time, and it's, you know, substantial as far as just the one lane. You cannot pass on it. I've been in my house for, my family farmed this property for generations, and my house has been there for 35 years. And I mean, even if it's slight sprinkle, if I get off my driveway, I am stuck. So, yeah, those things are the things that are most important to me, and especially the, the traffic coming on and off Dewest Road. It's just dangerous. Other than that, if her garden looks like these pictures this gentleman back here have, I got to go see it, because I tried...
Please address your comments to me, ma'am.
I tried to have a small family garden several times, and I would like to think I have my father and grandfather's green thumb, but keeping the critters out of it, the deer and the snakes are very bad in the area because of the creeks, copperheads. Keeping the property cut and maintained is very important. So I would just like to say that, that you need to keep everything, my husband mows every day in the summer.
Talk to me, please.
Pardon, oh, I'm sorry.
Address me, please. That's all right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
My name is Charles Crowe. If you look at the map up there, my property is directly adjacent to Ms. Stanfield's on the east side, have approximately four acres there. My main concerns in opposition of this is the driveway. I mean, this was designed, if you can use that term, as a one-lane, private residential driveway. It has water meters on both sides, it has water lines on both sides. There is no room to widen it. It can't be done, not unless a whole lot of expense is put into it. My other concern, of course, is the exit and entry into Beecham Path from Dewest Road. To the left, as you are exiting, you have a hill. There is very limited sight distance, and this is a problem both for people going out of Dewest Road, out of Beecham Path on the Dewest Road, and people coming off of Dewest Road onto Beecham Path. That when you top that hill and somebody is stopped in the middle of Dewest Road, waiting for somebody to get out of their way coming out of Beecham Path to it, they can get in, that is a real hazard, and we all deal with it every day. There's been numerous times when I'm traveling out of the driveway, out of Beecham Path, either heading towards Dewest Road or from Dewest Road to my home, where I have to pull basically into the woods to let people pass. And I do this because my old truck has a crappy paint job, so I just let people pass. I'm the one that pulls it over. I give. That's my main concerns. Now, I would like to address one thing that Ms. Stanfield said about her giving produce to her neighbors. I came home one day, and there was a little plastic Kroger bag with about three tomatoes, about seven pieces of okra, and I don't know what else, because I didn't look any further, because from what I seen, it all looked like it should have been thrown to trash, not giving away to people. I don't know who this woman thinks she is. She can come in here and flip the whole community on its head. Another concern, the grass. They don't cut the grass. I mean, I'll look out my front door, there's grass up like this. We never had rats before she moved in. Now we've got rats, and now guess what? The rats have got under my house and ate my water lines. I've got to redo my entire house, because I've had rats chew on my water lines and destroy the floors of my house. I don't appreciate the woman, and from what I've heard with her dealings with everybody else, and she's trying to use challenged people to help out in her garden, like I've heard, I wouldn't trust her with that. I don't know what she does for a living, but I hope she doesn't work for kids, is all I got to say.
My name is Cindy Beecham Harvey. I've been living out on that property for about, I'd say, 35 years now. Number one, the piece of drive area that you all can see from Dewest Road to where it kind of vees off is the easement.
Please stay at the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. That, this portion here is the easement. I am a 50% owner in that. I own it legally by deed. I do not wish it to go Ag 1. Number two, from that easement on back is a path. It is privately owned property. There is not an easement from the mailboxes out to the homes. That's private-owned property. I've got a situation with some of exactly what Mr. Crowe said. We're having a vermin issue. In the last couple of years, I've had to deal with screaming chickens in distress, trying to get out of a coop.
in distress trying to get out of a coop that had not been moved for fifteen days. I witnessed it on my own. We back into, as you are well aware of, Picketts Mill Historical Site. That is Picketts Mill. The creek right in my very backyard, and it won't take you a second to get there, feeds right into Picketts Mill. On my property alone, we have rescued juvenile red shoulder hawks with shattered wings. I have every asundry of snake you can think of, and we have done diligent work to keep that as pristine as we possibly can because we do butt into Picketts Mill Historical Site. We were there long before it became Picketts Mill Historical Site. We've been out here when there was no one on D West Road, but the Mannings and the McGee's ships, that was it. There's nobody there. The current degrading factor of three fifty-two is quite emotional for me. It's a small knit residential, single-family unit out there. You've got people that are retired and elderly. They have put their life's work into their home, and they're fixing to lose their value to, in their, to their investments. Not to mention that not one of us has ever been in need of any HOA. We are just respectable, good people, and we keep our places clean. You should see what my mom and dad's home looks, what it looks like now. Now granted, they're dead, but the rest of us are taking care of our business, and she does not. I have had to endure automobiles on my property nonstop. We've had them coming and going late in the night. I get to get woke up in the nighttime because of chickens in distress. The stench on Beecham Path is enough to make one vomit. We get this opened, it's gonna be a rolling horrible nightmare, and you are gonna be destroying Mr. and Mrs. Bless- Blessett's Investments, my Investments, Mr. and Mrs. May Investments. That is a small residential community, and we are good people. To maintain that road is not a problem, but let me explain this to, to you. When he says one way it is, you destroy that ditch on one side, you're gonna have a flood in the driveway, and the driveway's gonna wash out to the other side. I've been living here for thirty-five years. On the other side is a tree line with two culverts to go, take that water to the ditch, which feeds directly into Picketts Mill Historical Site in my backyard. Okay, we've got the, the wildlife management group down here in the other part of the county. Please don't mess with Picketts Mill. Please don't mess with our investments. Please don't take our peace. And if you don't mind, think about it. How if it's about as near your front yard? You deal with it. It's not been fun so far.
Excuse me, could you show us those pictures?
Absolutely. And I tell you, I didn't bring enough of them. This was my father's lawn, prior to me. Ungodly mess. I don't know who this is. I don't know who that is. I have no idea. There's a different car, here's a different car, here's a different vehicle, here's a different vehicle. Oh, look at this. These are coming over into my father's yard.
Can we maybe go put those at one end and we'll pass it down?
And not only that, guess what? Since there's a property line dispute, guess what they're doing for what I call concerted manipulation? They're parking in my yard. Her family, her family-
Please address your comments to us. Thank you.
They're parking in my yard.
Thank you.
This is the before? This is the before? I guess. If you would, please, just give us a moment. Would you all like to proceed as you pass the pictures? Okay. We're good at proceeding while they pass the pictures. Please, ma'am, if you would, go ahead and state your name and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Pamela Elrod, and I'm Rusty Harvey's mother, Cindy's mother-in-law. And I've not witnessed this myself, but I've had times when Cindy called me so upset and crying because of her dealings with her neighbor. And she just, from what I've heard, she's, just seems to be a very disrespectful lady. And when she was asked, just this, just a while ago, what her hours would be, she said her original thought was nine to two or something. And then she was asked about would she take her things to the farmer's market, and she said she had thought about it. And they asked, you asked what hours, and she said, um, that, would it be like nine to six? And she said, off the top of my head, I was thinking nine to six, but nothing's, she, uh, maybe she's thinking a lot, but she needs a plan, you know, and she needs to not have people in and out. That's not a, that's not a road. It's a path, and it's shared by many families, and it's a driveway. And I know when my grandchildren became of age to drive, I would leave there and just pray that they would never pull out on that road with the least, somebody, the least bit speeding come, there's a blind spot over a hill. And if you don't just pull out and, and get out of the way, then somebody's gonna get killed. It's, it is very, very dangerous. And it doesn't need to be a, this, any type of business in some, on so many families' driveways, but that's all I have to say.
Hey, I'm Rusty Harvey. Uh, I've lived at three fifty-one. Uh, we have lived on Beecham Path for thirty years. And all of our neighbors have been there thirty or more, or forty or more. And, uh, Ms. Stanfield had a great plan and a great dream, and she'd been dreaming this for ten years, but she moved into a residential neighborhood to do it. And I, I have to assume that she's gonna get the maximum animals that she's allowed to have. I can't assume that she's just gonna have a goat or a sheep. And if she moves, what's the next guy gonna have? That is a big concern, is hearing the animals at night, smelling the animals all day. And, uh, the traffic you're looking at, most of that was occurred on one day. And we're not talking about a barbecue or a Christmas party. We're, we're talking about this, coming, going, coming, going, coming, going, coming, going. They're there five minutes at a time. And her garden was not nearly big enough for that kind of business, so there's business going on, but I don't know. And that's, that's all I got.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? We have a couple of minutes left as far as opposition goes. Hearing nothing, I will clo- close this portion of, um, the input from public. I would ask Ms. Stanfield if you would please come back to the lectern. Ms. Stanfield, as you heard, there were several that spoke, uh, in opposition to your planned use, um, and intent to rezone. Listed a number of, a number of concerns, uh, mostly revolving around traffic and use of the path. Um, I may have some questions for staff, but I wanted to give you an opportunity, as you do have minutes remaining, to address any of those concerns that you would like, and then any questions that may come from the Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners. So I'll give the floor to you at this point.
Um, I, I agree with the, um, the entrance and exit. It is a little sketchy. As I said before, I'm willing to, um, consider taking my produce other places instead of people having to come in and out. But I will say this, I don't have another business going on at my house. I have friends, and I have family, and I love getting people together. So I'm a little concerned that she's taken so many pictures of my house and the people that are coming in and out. I don't know that that's, I don't know why that should be a concern of hers. We, we, I, I get together with my family a lot. I get together, I have dinner parties. Um, so as to the rat situation, I didn't know that was happening. I, do you have questions for me? I haven't seen the pictures, obviously, so do you have questions for me regarding the pictures?
Well, with regard to, um, again, some of the situations that were listed here, it's not something that I, through investigating the zoning, and I don't know if anybody else has, was able to observe anything like that. Um, is there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
I have.
Please.
I have a question. The pictures that I looked at, they were all stacked like this. They were all on one date, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. What was going on that day? It was like car after car after car after car after car. Well, did you have like, is that the tipi- a typical day?
Uh, no, I can look at my calendar. I'm not really sure. I know I had a, a dinner party in Oc- I think I had a dinner party in October. I mean, mm-
Ten twenty-four was a Saturday. But twenty-twenty, how long have you had the property?
Oh, twenty-twenty. I bought it in March twenty-twenty.
Okay, so from March of twenty-twenty to October of twenty-twenty, did you have a garden back then?
No.
So in October twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty, you did not have a garden?
No, I had, I started my garden last year.
Okay, so maybe these cars-
That's what I'm saying, like, I-
Were not going by c- coming to your house, maybe they were going someplace else.
The Harveys and I are the only ones at the end of the driveway, so.
Okay. So I think that was my question, why October twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty, were there so many cars going by? And you're saying they didn't come to your house?
No, I'm saying I don't remember dates of when I had a gathering or-
Okay, and you didn't have a garden at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
So it doesn't have anything to do with a garden. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I haven't done anything but have-
Okay, and how would you feel about, um, being able to have your garden and being able to sell your vegetables? Cause I love the idea, I love organic, but not having the animals. Is the animals a strategic part of your business plan?
It, it is, because I, I really do want to have the, I wanna be able to sell eggs, and I want to be able to have, um, goat milk and make soaps and stuff like that.
Okay.
A lot of the concern also issues from adding additional traffic coming into and out of Beecham Road, uh, path. Uh, particularly at the point that that intersects with D West Road, um, vertical alignment. I, I, having gone out there, I mean, it, it looks like a traditional side of the road, you know, I mean, maybe the brush can be cut back, things like that can be done to improve sight distance. But if it's a hill-
Right.
You know, you, anybody who enters there, whether they're a resident or visitor, takes the same risk.
Right.
So I don't know how to assign or defray that risk without asking the DOT to go through and cut that hill down. Um, I d- I don't know that that's even a feasible consideration, um, any, anytime in the future. But with regard to the use of the path and the narrowness of it, and the fact that people have utilities that are laid out in the ditch line, and if you have meeting, uh, cars that are meeting one another and they're having to move over into the ditch line, I can understand the concern, the strain that it may put on people's nerves, thinking that they're gonna end up having to do a lot of utility repair. I don't know what can be done, and maybe this is more where I would ask city attorney, the county's jurisdiction on a path is just that. That's private property, and it would be more of a civil matter to iron out the usage agreements. Is that correct?
Certainly is. Certainly a civil matter between private parties. Uh, the issue there is gonna be, there appears to be an easement. It's shown on the plat. What is the scope of the easement? It's looking at the plat while the hearing's been going on. It looks to be a twenty-foot ingress, egress easement. Uh, typically, one would assume that's for residential purposes, since there's resident, residences out there. Uh, to the extent she has legal authority to exceed the scope of that, that's a, that's a legal discussion for, uh, between private parties.
Is it possible, Ms. Be- Ms. Stanfield, that the, um, the, the other concern that was levied about the vermin or rodents issue, is that stemming from any operation that you currently have on that property? Okay, the person at the lectern is to address me. I don't need comments from the, from the audience. So please comply with the meeting requirements. Ms. Stanfield?
I have chickens in a chicken tractor. They don't free range, and I have a garden. I have a field below me that I've left to grow over the winter because I think it looks pretty. I didn't know that there was a rat problem, um, and I don't know that it can be tied back to that, but I haven't had any conversations about that, so I was unaware of that.
All right. In going forward, we'll take a vote in a minute, um, but I wanted to cover a couple of things with regard to stipulations. We have the one that's already listed, and then you offered also to add no swine.
Yes.
Then there was a statement that you made that you would have no heavy equipment, tractors, or otherwise involved in the process.
Um.
You said no tractors and no dig.
I don't think I'll need tractors, right, cause I'm doing no dig.
Well, would that be?
What, you said no tractors and what?
No dig.
Right, right.
Gardens, which-
I mean, to put fences up or to put, you know, like, I, I don't own a tractor, and I don't plan on owning a tractor. I might have a four-wheeler or, you know, something to, like a go-kart to pull a trailer with or something.
I would think that in more practical terms, having heavy equipment that would traverse that path-
Right.
May be problematic, so if you're agreeable to a stipulation that would eliminate heavy trucks, tractors, or otherwise. And I don't know about the no dig thing, so I'm not that familiar with that type of gardening.
But, but can I, let me ask this question. If I needed a load dropped off, that's, that's not me using heavy equipment. Is that what you're saying? Like, if I needed a load of compost dropped off, they can, they can drop it off?
Well.
I mean, there's electric trucks that come out there. There's things that need to be used, I guess, by other people to deliver goods.
Well, you mentioned it, so I wrote it down as a possible stipulation. If you're not wanting to do that, I won't add it at this time, but that was part of the conversation.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to clarify. What you, is what you're asking me, that I won't own heavy equipment and use it on the property?
You won't?
Or that there will be no heavy equipment allowed on the property?
Well, what was your intention when you made the statement, when you said no tractors and no dig?
That I wouldn't be using heavy equipment on a regular basis on my property.
On a regular basis?
To garden. Yes, sir.
So you may use it intermittently?
Well, I, I feel like it puts me, kind of backs me into a corner if I say I will never use it.
All right.
But I don't intend on having a tractor or needing one.
All right. The other comment was from a line of questioning from Mr. Aston to you about hours of operation. You said at one point you would be looking from nine to twelve and from three to six. And then during the conversation, eh, either through hearing of it or, or mentioning it, it got recorded or written down as nine to six. Which is it that you're asking?
I think I could easily say nine to twelve and three to six.
All right. All right, so at this point, are there any further questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
No questions but a comment. As far as like the tractors and heavy equipment, I mean, you know, we fix our paths with tractors. It's kinda hard to do it by hand, so you'd almost hate to limit any kind of tractor use to try to fix a gravel driveway. So I, I would only ask to consider, I mean, think about that process, you know, even if it's a skid steer or anything like that, you know, so. You know, I, I think, I think I understand what the concerns is, was big trucks and big equipment coming down a path, but I would be, I would, I would just be careful how you, uh, put that on paper, I guess.
Capture that, capture that stipulation.
Right, yeah.
Are there any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
If you pull it back to A1 zoning, does it require any kind of special use permit to be selling the produce on site?
I'm just gonna go over it real quick.
Okay.
Just, just for what's, what's required right at this moment in the zoning ordinance, she's currently zoned R2 Suburban Residential District under permitted uses- She's currently zoned R-two suburban residential district under permitted uses, number two E. Sale of agricultural products raised on the premises is a currently her right to do right now? If she zones to agricultural, she would be able to do the sale of agricultural products raised on the premises plus agricultural farm stand. So the difference, there's a little bit of a difference there. So usually what that means is in the R-two or A-one, if somebody's growing corn or oak or tomatoes, a lot of times they'll have a sign out there, tomatoes for sale or something. That's, that's what that purpose was in the ordinance, is that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but a lot of that is going to base on the animals that she wants to have. She can't have them on residential. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions to the applicant or to staff? Thank you, ma'am. You may take your seat. So at this time, I have a, may I have a motion on application twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two dash Z? Keeping in mind, there is one listed stipulation, an added stipulation of also no swine, and then hours of operations from nine to six and three, nine to twelve and three to six, if there is a move for approval or recommendation to approve. And that is not what I'm telling you. You're going to make the motion on. I'm just saying if you do that, please consider stipulations. But this time I will entertain a motion one way or the other.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny from Mr. Henson. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Leggett. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes three, two and one. This will be forwarded to tonight's meeting at the Board of Commissioners for final action to be taken. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I want to make sure I have the times. I've done that before and picked the wrong day. If you have an applica-, if you're, this is your application, you must be present for it to be considered. If you have an interest, you should also be present for your own person, personal reasons. At this time, Mr. Robinson?
Okay, next application, twenty-twenty-two oh-four Z, application by Rochelle Green requesting to rezone zero-point-five acres from neighborhood business district to R-two suburban residential district to bring property into zoning compliance with the surrounding residential lots. Property is located in land lot eight fifty-two, District Two, Section Three. It's located on the south side of Scoggins Road. It's west of Pine Forest Drive, which is part of Pine Forest Estates. Address is two fifty-five Scoggins Road. It's in Commission Post Two. Staff recommends approval. We've had no opposition. And this was a application, or this was a neighborhood business zoning many, many years ago for a hair salon, and this never did happen, and this actually would put it into compliance. And the applicant is present.
If you would, please sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair. And we may even hold on for just a minute, as those willing to leave, wishing to leave do so. Oh. The lady named Cindy, she left her pictures here. Does she want them?
Yes.
Get there, over on this end. Sorry to interrupt you. If you would, please now state your name and address your comments to me in presenting your application.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rochelle Green. I'm here on behalf of the zoning Scoggins Road, two-five-five Scoggins Road. That was, yes, a zone as a hair salon, and we are just asking to rezone it back into residential property so that it would fit better in the scope of the neighborhood and of the area, and then that we can have some, another home for someone. And that's clearly it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green. That was very clearly stated. Are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission? Any questions from Board of Commissioners? You may take your seat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition of this application or may have questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion on application twenty-twenty-two dash zero-four dash Z. Motion to approve from Mr. Aston. I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero and one. And that ends most of the agenda with the exception of a big piece of ordinance work on the part of Ms. and Director Lippman.
Yes, if you would, that'd be awesome.
Yes, this is deciding the next, next item is zoning ordinance text amendment to adopt a unified development ordinance for Paulding County, Georgia. It's known as the U D O. Paulding County Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners is to consider a text amendment to the Paulding County zoning ordinance two thousand and three as amended. The amendment is in regard to adoption of a unified development ordinance, U D O.
Ms. Lippman?
Thank you, Chris, and thank you all. I've presented to you guys before about the U D O, and today is the day, Tuesday, two twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two.
You picked the good day.
So I just want to go back over some of the work we've been doing almost the past three years and hopefully get a favorable recommendation from you all today. This is proposed adoption of the Paulding County U D O. Just a reminder of what it is, back in, gosh, it seems so long ago. I don't remember if it was twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty. I think it was twenty-nineteen. We started working to combine all of the documents that deal with development in Paulding County, which includes the Code of Ordinances, the two thousand and three as amended zoning ordinance, and the nineteen ninety-nine, yes, nineteen ninety-nine, development regulations and standard details into a unified development ordinance. The draft that we have currently, it is available on our website for view. There's just a actual picture. There's a big chunk of what we have. Just to go over what's going to be in the U D O and what we'll be asking a recommendation for today. It's divided into titles, so Title One is administration. Title Two is zoning. Title Three is development, and at the present time, we are not ready to adopt a development portion, but once we get this initial adoption done, we're going to work to get that done in the next couple of months. We are bringing signs back in from the Code of Ordinances into the Unified Development Ordinances, along with telecommunications, as well as an appendix. And right now, the appendix is where all of our inactive zoning districts live. We have several PRD, R-four, R-seven, and we are actually proposing to move low density quality residential development district into the appendix of inactive zoning districts as well. And just a reminder, just a little focus in on the zoning ordinance, just to go on what's new. And we have converted all of our uses into the North American Industrial Classification System. And just to make my life tough, in between the beginning of the year and a couple of weeks ago, they updated from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two terminology. So I didn't want to adopt a unified development ordinance in twenty-twenty-two with two thousand and seventeen terminology, so those have all been updated. Another use we have is special exception uses, and I'll just point out, I looked while we were discussing our first case today. Temporary produce stands becomes a special exception, and it would be something that they would have to fill out a form, go through our office in planning and zoning to get a special exception, and the requirement is that you have to grow those products on your own property. We've separated overlay districts from base districts. Zoning districts are linked to future development map character areas, and I'll just take a minute to speak. We are in the middle of updating our comprehensive plan, and at the end, I've got a link to a survey. We had a public meeting last Tuesday, and if you weren't able to attend that, I would encourage you to go through the virtual public hearing and be able to comment on some future land use items for Paulding County. Also, we will be having site-specific rezonings at the time when they're here before the planning commission. If they need a buffer variance or a side yard setback variance, that's something that the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners can condition on that site. Something that we've added since we last presented to the planning commission is reversion standards. As we've written it right now, if you do not act on a rezoning that's been approved by planning commission and the Board of Commissioners within three years, it will revert back to what it was initially. There's also some requirements. If right-of-way dedication is required, there'll be a timeframe that that has to be done, and that could jeopardize it, and this would apply to special use permits as well. We have a lot of color-coded charts and use of hyperlinks in the online version. If you want to find it, if you realize that you're a special exception and you need to see what your requirements are, there's a hyperlink that lets you jump right to that, and we have some of these zoning categories. Today, we are proposing, there's three base districts and one overlay district that are new to us. There is estate residential, rural residential, planned village and silver comet overlay. And here's just an example of the purpose and intent of the planned village that shows where it is tied to future land use map areas, and it has a lot of the requirements in there. My next example is one of the color-coded charts. This is the residential, these are all the residential districts, and it's just a handy chart. The underlying information is what, what's the word I'm looking for? Governance, if there's ever a conflict, but this is just a handy place if you want to look at all the zoning districts and see the minimum lot sizes, the minimum road frontages, and we have charts like this for a variety of uses. I mentioned the special exception uses. This ironically is backyard chickens, so this would be a new requirement. We're going to be probably in the next couple of weeks making a lot of new forms, especially for a lot of the special exceptions that we think we'll see a lot of, and this kind of shows the example of, you can see where the hyperlink is, and then you would click on that and it would take you to backyard chickens, and it would show you what your requirements are. I mentioned the North American Industrial Classification System. This was a lot of the work that we did. It's a standard used by federal statistical agencies and classifying businesses, and as I mentioned, they updated from two thousand and seventeen to twenty-twenty-two recently, and they changed every single retail business. They changed the number on me. They eliminated the word stores, and they've gone with the word retailers, and I think that is all about e-commerce. I think that was the reason behind that. And here's just an example of a former use. We used the word banks, including drive-in facility, and the new NACs term is commercial banking. And this is something, when you get an occupational tax permit in Paulding County, you have to give us your six-digit NACs number, and it's a great tool for our economic development to know what kind of businesses that we have. And here's just a look, and this is the one I like to pick on because they up and changed it on me, so retail trade, general merchandise, and we have a link to this, and we've used a lot of the NACs definitions in our ordinance. As I mentioned, there's a couple of things that are coming into the development ordinance that have been located in other places. We're bringing the sign ordinance back from the Code of Ordinances, and we are bringing the telecommunications in, and that includes towers, antennas, smart wireless facilities, and it also includes our broadband availability ordinance. Our next steps, and this here at the top, www pauldingchartingcourse.com is a link to our joint update of our comprehensive plan, along with our comprehensive transportation plan. So share that with all your friends and especially take our survey. So our next step, we hope to make, get a recommendation today to adopt titles one, two, four, five in the appendix. We are going to complete work on Title Three Development and hope to have that within the next three or four months. We are working to update our comprehensive plan, along with the comprehensive transportation plan. That, we have received an extension. Our deadline was the end of June, and it is now the end of October, so we will have recommendations for that in August, and we will have a new five-year work program. And that is the end of my presentation, but I will be happy to answer any questions.
I will take a brief moment just to tell everybody willing to listen to me that Director Lippman, her staff, Paulding County as a whole, the departments that have been involved, and the stakeholders that you've drafted for the comp plan have done a wonderful job in putting this together. Any of these venues that they set up for the public participation portion, I highly recommend y'all to, everyone to go out and take part in. It's your opportunity to have your voice heard during those programs. And with regard to the U D O, I know a lot of work has gone, gone into that over the last few years, and what I've read is a marked improvement over what we currently have. And I'll turn it loose. Any other body, any other person from the planning commission want to comment or ask questions, please do so.
I do have a question on the issue, you wouldn't call it the, the village?
Planned village.
Planned village?
One of our new districts.
Right, so I see that you have it within a one-mile radius of the crossroads?
Mm-hmm.
And then the hospital?
It's a two-mile radius from the hospital, which, because it was listed in our future development map as a high-intensity crossroad community, which is why it's a two-mile radius.
And then the other is a one-mile.
And the other is a one-mile.
Okay, so yeah, my question was, how did you come up with the one mile and the two mile?
Just looking at, I, I don't have them all, but I have a lot of maps where we, we have one map where we had a half mile, a mile, mile and a half, two miles, two and a half miles, different radius to see where it was. We just thought, just because of the nature of those roads, that looking at what a radius, two miles, around two seventy-eight and ninety-two looked like, and then going up to the crossroads. If you go out too far, a majority of it's in Cobb County, because that's right where Cobb and Paulding get together. We can, we will certainly, will incorporate those maps into our zoning map. Some of the work we're doing on the comprehensive plan, we actually want to get away from the radius. We liked the districts that we rode, and we wanted to be able to use them, but we want to not use a radius. We want to use parcel-specific nodes. So as part of the comprehensive plan, we have five area studies that we're going to be doing, and those radiuses will probably become parcel-specific nodes with names in the future.
And I imagine within the two-mile radius of, let's say, the hospital, that's all sewed?
Yes, both of those areas are sewed.
Okay, and then one last question, with regards to zoning, like what we did today, and you know, when you zone a new property. Is there any type of rescission timeframe? Or is it like once the commissioners vote and they've approved a specific zoning? Is there, I know some counties have a timeframe within thirty days. They can come back and they can overturn that. Is that way, the way that it is here? I'm not aware of that, but I'm just asking.
Jason, you want to take some of that?
Under the current zoning ordinance, there is not any sort of rescission period for the Board of Commissioners to change it once they have decided to amend the zoning to whatever it is. Under this proposal, and it's a little bit different thing, and I don't think you're asking about this. Under the new proposal, there'll be this three-year reversion period where if it's, if it gets zoned, you know, let's just use an easy category that's no longer existing. If it's zoned PRD today, which it can't happen because PRD's been retired, but if it was, and then they didn't do anything with it for three years, and doing anything with it has a definition. But if there is no action, then it goes back to R-two, presumably what it originally was.
And that starts the day that this is adopted, is voted on, and at what point does that start?
For most cases, it's going to start the day that rezoning is approved, talking about new applications.
So let's say, for example, PRD. Okay, since PRD no longer exists, so we can't have any rezonings for PRD. What about the past PRDs?
What about the ones that previously?
Previously, yes.
You know, honestly, I'd want to look at the draft to tell you. I know it has been addressed, I believe, but I'd want to look at that text.
Is there a reason that you did select the three? Is that something that's standard that you have found? Or is that just a, a number that seemed to work well?
It's a number that we felt comfortable. It's a number that we felt comfortable going with. You wanna give the applicants the very reasonable opportunity to do whatever it is they're proposing to do with the property. But I think the experience that the county and, and the cities, uh, went through, given the rash of rezonings that happened, say, 2004, 2005, 2006. Economy crashed in 2008. Now you've got some of these zonings that were approved a decade and a half ago. All the circumstances and conditions surrounding the parcel are, have changed. And now it appears that, hey, what was originally intended, what was originally presented to the public as the proposed use, that may no longer be in the best interest of the citizens and the county, uh, as to allow that to continue. Perhaps if they want to, uh, continue with it, maybe we should take another look at it.
Thank you.
And one thing, I'll just add, um, we have updated what's required for rezoning request. And you, you probably will start seeing a little bit thicker rezoning applications. Um, one of the things we are requiring is a schedule. Um, when you plan to commence the project and when you plan it to be done. So that will need to be included with their application, or it will not be a complete application.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the intent too behind this is that what growth we are going to receive. You, you're trying to contour that or encourage it in areas that are already established with the infrastructure to support it, or near enough to that it can be developed easily and tie in. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
I'm glad to see, um, that happening because I know we have had some property that has been zoned for many years. And, um, it could, um, put the county in kind of a tight situation if they all came at one time and said, "We want sewer," and then it'd be a, be a fight to, to get that fulfilled. And also, uh, is the 92 corridor from Harum to, uh, the Douglas Kenny Line, or we're going to set aside that as a business corridor in, in this development?
Take the online survey and pick that as one of our five study areas, and it might be. So, um, it is, um, that part of 92, um, does have to follow the corridor overlay. Um, district, and, um, that certainly is one of the five areas that got my vote to be one of the study areas.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the Director? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
We'll get to comment tonight, after that. Ms. Seaver?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Stover?
Well, I will say this is three years in the making, I guess, to finally, you know, retire something that's 20, almost as old as I am. You know, from when it was started, so.
What time do you have?
No, I'm just glad to see us updating. I mean, come, we've come a long way. Uh, this county's came a long way from what it was from the last, the 1999 revision, so. Just glad to finally see it come about. Um, may not be perfect, you know, but we do have our ears. You know, I'll take phone calls or texts or emails or whatever on questions and, um, on any kind of concerns that people have. But, um, one thing, as far as with that three-year,
Sunset.
Whatever, yeah, you wanna call it. Yeah, there is a chance for a, um, a waiver to extend it, correct?
Yes, there is provisions for an extension.
So it's not just deadline cutoff, so just didn't know if we even mentioned that, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Jeremy Carmichael?
I'd just like to kinda echo a lot of things that y'all said, Roger, and, and Brian, and Deborah. Uh, this has really been needed for a long time, and I am thrilled that Anne and her staff worked as hard as they did and, and used legal advisor, uh, to allow so many things, you know, when, when you've got 20-year-old, uh, ordinances, you know, like Brian said, he was only five years old when they were written, and but seriously, uh, there was such a great need for change, and there's been a lot of effort and a lot of, uh, collaboration, uh, to bring this about, and I'm real excited about it.
Well, at this time, I am going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. So anyone wishing to make comment regarding the Unified Development Ordinance for Paulding County, please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair. Hearing none. I am going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. I will, um, say one more thing regarding it. Um, obviously, this is a revision or adoption of new language and new conditions and new compliance matters for future development as we go forward. It is a great effort. I think it is a good product. Uh, I would also encourage Paulding County to continue looking at it on a regular basis because it's not the last change that you will need to make. Change is evolving, and we will have to make sure this is able to do so as we roll forward. But it's, it's a great effort, and I really am proud of, of the product that you put out. And you either plan for growth, or you're gonna get run over by it. We're close enough to the metropolitan Atlanta area, we're gonna get growth. It's just how you govern it. Any other comments from the Planning Commission? We have to take a vote to recommend forwarding it and give a recommendation forwarding it to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at seven, so at this time, I will entertain that motion.
Make a motion we adopt the Paulding County UDO.
I have a motion to adopt the UDO by, um, Commissioner Leggett. You'll have a second. Second from Mr. Aston, all in favor? Motion passes. It's gonna say five, zero, and one, but I'm gonna vote for it too and not abstain, so six unanimous. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I know y'all like being here, but come on. Motion from Mr. Henson, second from Mr. Leggett, all in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Have a great week.